Good. All right, let's go ahead and get the work session going here. Good evening, everybody. Thank you for coming to our fifth Monday work session this evening, September 29th. We'll begin the work session by going around introducing everybody because we've got the TIF Commission here and you may not know everyone. So, we'll start with Councilmember Boehner and go around the table that way.
Councilmember Boehner, I'm with Ward Three.
Councilmember Kevin Calog, Ward One.
Charlie Hubach, Ward Four.
Derek Moorhead, Councilmember Ward Two.
Jay Holman, Councilmember Ward Three.
I'm Sonya Abdalgawad and I'm a City Councilmember in Ward Four.
Dale Jacobson, I'm under the TIF Commission.
Todd Holzman, the TIF Commission for the City.
I'm Mayor Kirkoff.
Ruth Johnson, Rapex School Board for the TIF Commission.
Carrie Montes, Southern Lieutenant Rapex School District.
Jim Fearborn, City Manager.
David Bushak with the Law Firm of Gilmore and Ballin, Kansas City.
David Bushak with the Law Firm of Gilmore and Ballin, Kansas City.
Thank you. Couple of real quick housekeeping items. If you have one of these freestanding microphones, when you're done using it, click it off. The other ones that have a cord on them, you can leave them on all the time. We have a number of items on our work session tonight, but the first item involves a meeting with the TIF Commission, so we'll get through that and then we'll excuse you so you can head on out here. There's a couple of people dressed up in, was it Royals uniforms? So, I'll toss it over to our City Manager.
Thank you, sir. The Galleria developer has brought forth a proposal for redevelopment project number four within the Galleria TIF area that Mr. Bushak, I think, properly describes as a speculative sort of proposal to come before the council. So, it would involve, staff believes, at least an amendment because none of, one of these sorts of items has never been contemplated before. So, we anticipate that it would require some sort of an amendment to the council's economic development incentive policy that if the council wanted to proceed in that sort of a manner we would bring to you in October. You can go through the timeline here after Mr. Bushak makes his presentation, but in light of the different nature of this particular submittal or proposed submittal that may happen, we did want to come before the council, kind of explain, get council direction on how they want us to proceed. We invited the TIF Commission here tonight because we want you all to be able to hear exactly this discussion, what exactly is being proposed, and the parameters, if they exist, of what the council would then have inserted into the economic development incentive policy. And with that, I will turn it over to Mr. Bushak to give a history and some of the options that are available.
So, I'll start with a short summary of the issue that is presented by the Galleria TIF plan, which then leads into the more general policy issue that Jim just mentioned. The Galleria TIF plan was approved by the city on January 24th, 2005. That date becomes important for a particular reason that I'll explain in a moment. There were four redevelopment projects in the original plan. Three of the projects have been activated, so Project One was the Lowe's store, Project Two is the Sam's Club and the other retail development that's on the south side of the highway, Project Three is the project that's on the north side of the highway, and then Project Four is approximately seventeen to twenty acre parcel that lies just south of the Sam's Club store. The original TIF plan included a very brief description, essentially just a couple, a couple of points in the plan that had mentioned Project Four, but the plan, as it was originally approved by the city in 2005, didn't contain any particular data regarding Project Four, didn't contain a budget for Project Four, didn't contain the cost benefit analysis, and many of the items that are required by the statute to be included in a TIF plan for a project, the original plan didn't include those details. It just mentioned Project Four essentially as a concept. There's a particular rule in the TIF Act which requires that every project within a redevelopment area be activated within ten years after the plan is approved. A project is a smaller subset of the larger redevelopment area. So, the redevelopment area is the furthest boundaries of the TIF area, and then a project is typically a subset of that larger redevelopment area, and that's the area in which the city activates the collection of TIF revenues. TIF can be collected within any project area for up to twenty-three years. So, when a project is approved by ordinance by the city, that starts that twenty-three year TIF collection clock. Project Four, because it was only a concept in the original plan, has not been approved, and since every project has to be approved by ordinance and activated within ten years after the plan is initially approved, that means that we reach that ten-year deadline on January 23rd of next year. The developer has requested that the city activate Project Four, approve Project Four before that ten-year deadline, essentially to preserve it as an option. We've discussed this issue with the developer. They don't have any current prospects for development, meaning they don't have any signed leases, they don't have any letters of intent, haven't been able to demonstrate that there's any tenants that they have lined up at this point. But their request is, in essence, approve Project Four to preserve it as an option for both the city and the developer in the future. And if that project is not approved by January 23rd of next year, then it can't ever be approved under the original TIF plan. It would have to be a new TIF plan if the city were to ever activate TIF on that area. It wouldn't, the city couldn't approve Project Four under the TIF plan as it was originally approved. So, that's how the issue initially comes to the city. And as Jim mentioned, it presents a particular policy issue for the city, which is, to what extent does the city want to approve speculative TIF projects? And the way that we have discussed the issue and decided to bring it to the council and the TIF Commission for their consideration is initially as an amendment to the city's economic development policy. Back in February of last year, the city approved a comprehensive economic development policy, but it didn't address this specific issue. And that's largely because this is a unique issue for the city and it's not the kind of issue that most cities deal with. We've uncovered, the developers actually uncovered a few instances where the city, Kansas City, as an example, has approved a TIF project immediately before that ten-year deadline, essentially to preserve that option, to use TIF within a designated project area. Most cities don't encounter this issue. Most cities don't have a fact situation where a plan is approved and we reach the end of that ten-year time span where a project has to be approved, essentially sort of use it or lose it, the project has to be approved. Most cities don't encounter that situation. And I suppose that's because in the timeline of a development of a particular project, usually the phase development, you reach that point before the ten-year deadline. But in this case, it's been a number of years for this project to develop and here we are, Project Four has not been developed yet, but the question is, does the city want to entertain this request and what's the city's general policy position on this issue? I would say that most, I would say nearly all TIF plans are speculative to some degree. It's the rare instance where a developer presents a plan to the city and the tenant is ready to build. There are some projects that work that way. It's the rare case where the developer is actually the tenant, proposes to be a tenant. That's a very rare project. So, in most cases, when a developer is presenting a TIF plan to the city, the developer's essentially the go-between. So, there's the city, developer, developer lines up the tenants or the buyers, but in most cases, at best, the developer has letters of intent and it's the common situation where the developer is presenting the TIF plan, receives approval of the TIF plan, and then uses that as a marketing tool to then line up the remainder of the tenants. So, it's fairly common that projects that are presented for TIF approval are speculative to some degree. But I think in this case, what we're considering is speculative in the sense that the developer hasn't secured any tenants, as I said, no letters of intent, no indication that there's any tenants that are lined up to develop in the immediate future. What does the city want to do in that situation? That's essentially the policy question. In connection with the initial issue, as it's presented to the city then, we're not requesting that the City Council and the members of the TIF Commission that are here tonight render any sort of decision on the developer's proposal for Project Four. Instead, we're presenting it as a policy issue. To what extent does the city want to entertain speculative TIF projects in the sense that there are no tenants lined up, and under what circumstances would the city consider approving a project in those situations? I've delivered a memo to the City Council for the meeting tonight that runs through in more detail some of the facts that I've summarized, and there are a number of potential additional policy issues for the city to consider. There, the city can take into account the unique facts of the particular plan and the project as it has developed. The city has issued bonds that are repaid by the TIF and the Community Improvement District's sales tax revenues for this project. So, to the extent that the city does approve Project Four, the next question then becomes, what does that TIF revenue get used for? Is it used for just those new Project Four costs? Is it used to repay the existing bonds, or is it maybe a mix of those two? So, there's some other policy considerations for the city to eventually consider if it does decide that it wants to entertain speculative TIF plans in the manner that it's been presented. I've taken a little deeper look at the economic incentive policy, and I think I've found the point at which if the City Council wanted to proceed, we could amend the TIF policy. There's a section of the policy that deals with TIF plans. There's a particular section that deals with guidelines for consideration of TIF plans. As I mentioned, the specific issue of the extent to which the city would approve speculative TIF plans is not addressed, but that's something that could be added to the policy if the City Council wanted to move forward. And I think the amendment to the policy would read along the lines of that the city would consider speculative TIF plans or projects under the following circumstances or after giving due consideration to certain factors which could be enumerated, again, if that's the desire of the City Council. So, the issue is presented, to what extent should we amend the policy to consider speculative TIF plans? And your guidance on that issue will then give some direction to the developer regarding whether they should submit Project Four and whether we should notice up a TIF Commission meeting to consider it or not.
From staff standpoint, and David probably put it best when we were first discussing this, when you first look at one of these and you say, okay, well, we're looking at a development area that is totally speculative and we have no consideration of any type of a plan that's going in there, on the face of it, it would seem to be something rather unfavorable, that you're putting yourself out on a limb. And there, we would want to preserve the ability in any given situation for the council to simply say, each one of these is unique and we think that this one falls into the category of, no, absolutely not. But we also want to present to the council, the other end of that, could it be one that is so unique and of such unique circumstances? And this isn't going to be the only one, more than likely. We have another TIF area in the city that has no development on it that will expire, the ten years will expire in April of 2016. So, it is more than likely that we would see this revisited again unless the council were to just simply say, we are not going to consider speculative TIF. But, on the other hand, on the one end of the spectrum, on the left-hand side, you could say within the policy, one of our options is to simply say no. On the other hand, we want to preserve the uniqueness of every TIF by allowing for certain conditions to have to be met that we would decide on with each of these unique submittals on what we were willing to approve, extract from the developer, if you will, certain concessions, a certain percentage of the development has to be revenue generating, percentages of that revenue have to go to paying off the previous bonds, developers have to be obtained if there's no development group for it, a long series of conditions that the council could perhaps approve so long as it was attractive to them with the uniqueness of that particular TIF. So, we wanted to come to you all, get some direction on if you wanted something slightly broader than just absolutely not on a speculative TIF to go within the policy. With that, we would entertain any questions from the council.
Questions from the council? Councilmember Hubach?
One of the concerns, one of the concerns that I have, this is supposed to be prime development territory in Raymore, and yet we cannot get it moving, and I want to know why. Are the costs too high? Is the developer unrealistic on what he's asking for? Why is it that we're having so much trouble in getting rid of a piece, I mean, getting developed a piece of property that's supposed to be considered prime in Raymore?
I'm sure the developer would have a number of reasons for that, that I couldn't go into because I don't know the background, we don't know the background, of their negotiations with potential tenants, potential buyers of that property. And one of the, one of the fallbacks that has been used for a number of years is that right after a lot of these went in, we went into what I call that economic gap period where no development was occurring. So, we're pushing up on the back end of some of these, these ten-year TIFs. We're seeing that again. As David said, it is unique, but I think more and more municipalities are going to see this occur because of the long gap we had between people taking out TIF, in some cases being worried that TIF might be eliminated altogether. So, taking out TIF is a bookmark, and now they're running back up on the ten-year, a variety of reasons. But only the developer themselves could really speak to what's happening with their business dealings with various tenants who are wanting to go in there, and I wouldn't venture to speak for that.
Other questions?
This is a little bit of a question and a concern for both Mr. Fearborn and Mr. Bushak is, I'm looking at the plan itself and we, and I'm remembering when we put the Sam's Club in, and that's a pretty substantial item to put in someplace. And I remember the initial design, there were supposed to be a lot of smaller units. So, this plan has changed. I know that somebody who would want to go into this fourth, this fourth project area had, would have had to have changed their vision to see who their tenant would be, things like that. We've had Lowe's go in there, Sam's go in there, so there has been a lot of movement with this plan. So, cutting a little slack on the back end for this fourth project, I understand. My other concern though is, and I love the idea of these alternatives, putting conditions on it, do we run a risk where if we start over conditioning these things, are we in essence not playing a little bit of the role of the developer as well? I mean, where we start cherry picking exactly how we want this development to be to the point where we over, over condition the deal? I mean, what kind of pitfalls could we see if we get too involved with this, playing the negotiating game?
Yeah, I think that's a good point. And the first thing that comes to mind when you're, you're sort of taking that issue and putting it on the scale, eventually you, if this is presented to you, you, there are many different factors that you have to weigh in your final decision, and I think the concept of over conditioning it is, is an important consideration. But the countervailing side is the history of this particular plan and the bonds that the city's issued. The issue that you're raising has a particular level of concern if, if it's a fresh TIF plan coming to the city and you're considering it for the first time. In this case, you've got a TIF plan that was approved ten years ago, three projects have been activated. There was a major amendment to the TIF plan to allow for the Sam's Club. The city issued bonds back around when the plan was first approved. The city issued bonds again recently in connection with the development of the Sam's Club store. There's a certain minimal level of city annual appropriation pledge that's associated with repayment of those bonds. So, I think those conditions, or those facts play into whether you ultimately decide to condition your approval of Project Four based on those facts. And that would be, that's a very different situation than if you were presented with a fresh TIF plan and you were considering whether to approve a speculative TIF plan fresh as opposed to with all this history.
As kind of a follow-up to that, but you, you know, Mr. Fearborn mentions that we have another one that will be coming before us in 2016. Are the same, do the same circumstances exist? Because I think what I was gleaning from the initial statements was that we run an ability here to create a pattern, and how we handle this one could kind of ripple effect into the next ones or beyond that. So, could, I mean, I agree that, that's why I wanted, I conditioned or caveated that this is a large thing. We've seen Projects One and Two be very large and successful, so this isn't brand-new. But what is the circumstances of the subsequent TIF?
And that, as I had indicated, each one of these is so unique that staff wondered if the council would want to preserve your ability to look at the next one and go, either we, there's been, you know, there's been much less activity here, but we want to give a very clear outline of what our expectations are, or we want to give a freer rein to allow them to continue to move down so may, you know, and make those decisions that need to be made to allow that one to occur. So, perhaps the only condition the council would put on one like that is something revenue generating has to be in here within X number of years, or it does expire. In essence, extend the deadline.
Councilmember Calog.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. With extending this past that January, not allowing it to expire, what does that do as far as for timeline in the future for, for this TIF area? That's the first part of the question, Al.
If you approve the project, it will activate that twenty-three year TIF clock. So, if the ordinance, we've kind of mapped out a timeline of how this would work, and the ordinance would have to be approved, obviously, before the January 23rd deadline. So, probably the January 12th City Council meeting is when the decision would come to you. If the ordinance is finally approved on that night, the twenty-three year clock would start on that date. What that means in a technical sense is that TIF collection starts on that date. So, any increase in property values that result in increased property taxes would be collected, any increase in sales taxes would be collected. Of course, there's no retail that would be open immediately, so no sales tax would be collected. So, for the foreseeable future, until some development occurs, the TIF would collect any nominal increase in property values due to, for example, increased valuation based on surrounding development or whatever causes the property to have a slightly incremental increased value. Once the project is eventually developed out then, so let's say that's in five years, when sales taxes start being generated and when the value jumps dramatically, that's when the TIF revenue would really start being collected. So, we could have a scenario where you approve the project, the twenty-three year clock starts, there's essentially five years of no TIF collection, or very nominal TIF collection, and then the remainder, so the math on that would be the next eighteen years, would actually be TIF collection, and the TIF collection would stop at that twenty-three year period after the ordinance is approved.
Okay, thank you. Our last amendment, that big major change we did for the Sam's, I remember that had an effect on the previous TIF, and it was all renegotiated and all of that. In a certain, in a similar instance, if renegotiations or refinancing was to be brought before the council in the future for this fourth, fourth area, would that reset the clock for the other three?
No.
That clock is already set and it's, it can't be reset.
That's correct. Each of those three projects were approved by ordinance on a particular date, and the twenty-three year clock started for each of those projects. So, if this project is approved, that geographic area operates independently. Any TIF revenue that's produced within that geographic area has its own twenty-three year clock. The twenty-three year clock associated with the other three projects that I mentioned, those clocks are already running, they already have a designated end date, and they will, they will end on that date. The other issue that is associated with the question you're asking is renegotiation of, of the deal, maybe refinancing. The way the developer has presented Project Four to us is simply to activate Project Four, preserve options for the collection of TIF revenue, and how that TIF revenue gets spent, both as to new costs that are incurred by the developer associated with the actual development of Project Four, and, and maybe also, use of some of that revenue for repaying project costs associated with one through three, including repaying the bonds that have already been issued by the city. Those are all issues to be negotiated. Again, the way the developers presented the issue is, in essence, please approve Project Four to preserve our options. If it eventually develops, TIF revenue will be collected there, and, and if that happens, then the next step is to negotiate exactly how that TIF revenue is used, both as to new costs developer incurs or reimbursement of costs that they've already incurred.
And staff would also want to remind the council that the economic development incentive policy contains certain parameters already that these would not overlap. They may enhance some of them, but, you know, the council has made it very, very clear that residential TIF is, is off the, off the table. Those sorts of policies would remain in effect. Again, these would be enhancements that would be unique to a particular.
Along those lines, I had one additional thought with the last line of questioning, and that is that with the thought of not tying the city's hand too much regarding conditions, the policy amendment could be that the city will consider speculative TIF projects after giving due consideration to the following factors. So, the policy could state, could simply state a number of factors to be considered as opposed to hard and fast conditions to be implemented in each case. And again, that then preserves the option for you to consider those on a case-by-case basis.
And I'll let you go in just a second because I got a question. Fairly quick, easy question. So, if this Project Four is allowed to go on and it starts the clock and everything like that, that guarantees then that the development in that area will not be residential but will be business, right? Because it's a TIF area.
The council's current economic development policy calls for not approving residential TIF.
Okay.
I mean, it gives you, it-
Right. So, in effect, if the council says, okay, let's go ahead and start that TIF clock on Project Four, the council is in effect then saying that it's going to be commercial development in that area.
And you could specify that just that clearly, sir.
Councilmember, let's see, I think Hubach was next, then Abdalgawad, and then Calog. We'll get back to you in a minute here.
Amen. I have been on the council ever since the beginning of this project, and we have heard different things. Each time the developer would come to us, he was going to change the facade, he was going to do this, he was going to do that. Then they had a chance to have a business, quite a nice business come in, but they wanted to buy the property, but he wouldn't let them buy the land, and so they ended up going to Lee Summit instead. Everywhere that we've, we've bent over backwards to him every time that he's come before us, and I don't think I'm willing to bend backward anymore. I think it needs to be something else besides what he's got at his commercial. I'm not willing to give him another, how do we know if we give him ten years that he'll do any better than what he's done right now?
I don't think we do know, but we're not going to give him ten years if it starts the TIF clock. It's twenty-three years, right?
Correct.
Okay. Councilmember Abdalgawad.
Thanks. Thank you. I think it makes sense to allow the policy to give us some options, like Mr. Fearborn said, to say, you know, there are many, many different circumstances that may arise with TIFs and looking at all of the different developments that might come to us with the TIF, and, you know, we have writing in our policy that we have options, that we could look at it and do this, this, or this, we could look at it and do this, this, or this. And so, it seems to make sense to me to change that policy, to give us options, because it seems like this is something that, well, we know we're going to face again soon, and we don't know if we'll face it again, you know, in the long term. We can guess we probably are. So, I think that seems to make sense to me. But I did have a question. Near the end of the memo that we got in our- Near the end of the memo that we got in our packet, it kind of talked about how if we don't approve Plan Four, then for the developer to get a TIF on that later, he would have to approve blight again and all of that. So would you talk a little bit about what might happen if we don't approve it?
Sure. If the city, the city approved the initial plan upon making certain findings. So back in 2005, when the plan was approved, the city made all the findings that are required to approve a TIF plan. So the blight finding, BUT4, the use of TIF, the development would not occur, all the other findings that are required to approve a TIF plan, those findings were made in 2005. So if the city approves Project Four, it relies upon those original findings to approve Project Four, meaning you don't have to revisit the blight question, the BUT4 test. All of those findings that were made nearly 10 years ago apply to this project, and that's essentially how the TIF Act works. The TIF Act effectively says you have 10 years to rely upon these findings. And I think part of that, part of the policy basis for that 10-year limit is exactly the issue that you're asking about, which is, in essence, after 10 years, those findings become stale. The city needs to revisit the question of is the property still blighted, given how development has happened on surrounding properties, for example? That's one of many considerations. So if the city, now, to get to your specific question then, if the city doesn't approve Project Four as part of this TIF plan, it loses the ability to approve a project under this plan. And what that means is to activate TIF in the same geographic area, the city would have to approve a new TIF plan. And if the city approves a new TIF plan, then it has to make the same findings again with respect to that new TIF plan. So the blight finding, the BUT4 finding, the cost-benefit analysis, all of the thorough review that occurs when the city initially approves a TIF plan would have to happen again fresh for this property if this project isn't approved, and then instead, the city entertains approving a new TIF plan for the same property at some point in the future. You'd have to revisit all those findings, make those findings again, approve a new TIF plan, and then start the 23-year clock.
Just another quick question. So if, following along with what you said, I might assume that without the TIF, if we're having a hard time getting people to come in with the TIF, would it make it more difficult to find people to, to find tenants to get this developed without the TIF, first of all? And second of all, with the development there, would you guess that it would be less easy to find it to be a blighted area?
I guess on the first question, it's really an issue of marketability, and I suppose we have to assume that with TIF, that lowers the developer's overall development costs, and it makes it easier for the developer to develop the site, just from a sort of macroeconomic perspective, from the developer's standpoint. So I think the answer to the question would, would almost have to be, again, from a marketing standpoint, yes, it would be more difficult for the developer to market because their, their overall costs increase to develop the site. Sorry, the second part of the question?
The second, with the development there, what are the chances it would be found to be a blighted area again? Would that make it more difficult to get a TIF should we not approve Plan Four?
Well, there would have to be a fresh blight study and analysis of the property. One thing that I haven't investigated in too much detail is the, the original blight finding. I started working on this project, I suppose it was 2011 or so. The plan was initially approved in 2005, that was based on a blight study that occurred at that time, and the particular facts and circumstances associated with that initial blight finding took into account the development patterns, the condition of all of the property in the entire redevelopment area. So, so that original finding from 2005 applies to all of the property and whatever those factors were. There would have to be, like I said, a new blight study, a new blight finding that's made, and I suppose that's when the city would entertain that question. Is that property standing on its own, not considered as a package, the entire redevelopment area, is that property alone blighted? But as we stand here today, you can rely on that original blight finding to approve Project Four.
Okay. So if I remember right, it was Kellogg, and then Morehead.
Yeah, Jason, I hear I was in. After, after, Mr. Morehead. A lot of questions coming up and comment, but in regards to the TIF that is there, that is, I'm having a difficult time getting this one here out, but I'll go back to the comment that was made as far as worrying about this becoming residential. In our GMP, isn't, we have buffer zones that we go by. What is the current zoning of this area?
Commercial.
What is it, is it the same as what allows for the Sams Club that is there, or is it anything less than that?
It has the same zoning as the rest of the Raymore Galleria, which is the C3 commercial, allows commercial office uses.
Okay, so if the developer wanted to go with something less than that, would they be able to without changing the zoning, or would they have to change zoning to go to something less, less than that?
To go to residential, they'd have to change the zoning.
Okay. And then also with our, our buffer guidelines that we have, our buffer guidelines, you know, guidelines, I don't want to say requirement, but lack of a better word, require that, or recommend, suggest that it not be residential right up against that, that C3 that is there. Am I correct?
You're correct. However, what it would recommend as far as a transitional use would be a higher-density residential. That would be appropriate between, to the south of, of this track we're talking about is single-family residential. So if this track went to a higher-density multifamily, that would be an appropriate transitional use from the-
And if, if that was the multifamily, then that would, that would rule out the TIF incentive altogether, am I correct?
Well, I think what Mr. Catterett is talking about, though, is the multifamily, high-density area would be south of the existing TIF zone.
Okay, but-
It would not be contained within the TIF.
Okay, it wouldn't be able to be contained inside of that TIF.
No.
Okay, that answers that question. And then I'll, it'll come to me, so I'll let the next person go. Thank you.
Next one was Morehead. Boehner? No, he wants you to go first.
Fair enough. I only have one question, 27 subparts, though. So bear with me. No, it's a-
We're going to limit, I'm going to set the clock for three minutes.
No, this is more of just a, for a procedural understanding here. So first of all, has the developer submitted a new TIF plan amendment? Because I'm calculating 115 days here, and we have three holiday periods, and given the 45-day notice to the taxing districts, we're kind of on some limited timeframe here. So I see that tonight we're being asked to make a policy change, but ultimately, that will lead to an ordinance vote on two meetings sometime before the 23rd of January, which means we got to get a lot of dominoes starting to fall here. So have they, have they done that so we can get this 45-day notice period done? And then do we need our policy in place and solidified for the TIF Commission, for their public hearings? So I'm, I'm kind of seeing us doing two things simultaneously. How fast do we need to act on this policy? Because if we move forward tonight to do a change with the policy, we'd need to see some language put together by staff and approve that relatively quickly. So I see a lot of urgencies here in a lot of different ways. Am I reading that correctly?
You absolutely are, sir, and that's why we came up with a timeline for the blocks submitted a piece of paper here. If the council indicated their desire to go ahead and have an amendment to the policy, we would proceed with getting that policy together immediately. That would take a, a one-reading resolution change to have this policy changed sometime in October, so that the TIF Commission would know ahead of time what that change was, parameters that they may see that they're getting approached with first before the council actually sees them. We would post for the 45-day TIF Commission hearing on October 2nd, this Thursday, I believe. In 45 days, that would put the TIF Commission hearing on Tuesday evening, November 18th, at approximately 6:00 PM. The first reading of the cooperative agreement, which you have to give the TIF Commission hearing 14 days before the council can hear it, but that would allow for a first reading of the cooperative agreement for redevelopment, Project Number Four, on December 8th. And then depending on whether we canceled the meeting on December 22nd, that would still give us time on January 12th for the second reading, if that 12/22 meeting were canceled.
There's one other piece of history that's helpful on this issue, and that is, when the developer initially presented what became the Second Amendment that was approved by the city back in 2012, they had included Project Four in their initial submission. So what became ultimately the Sams Club, the changes to Project Three on the north side of the highway, they had also submitted Project Four, and a part of the city staff's evaluation of that entire submission as a package was that Project Four was, just as we've been talking tonight, it was too speculative for the city to consider at the same time as the remaining development, which was, at the time, much less speculative, and, and as borne out over time, they were able to develop. So the, the decision was, at that time, to focus on those components of the project that they were essentially ready to go with, and hold off on Project Four because of its speculative nature as compared to the other development that did eventually go, and that became part of the Second Amendment. So what that means in practical terms is, I believe the developers essentially already presented all of the documentation that they need for Project Four. They'll probably pull that back out, take a look at it, see if it needs to change, and I think they're ready to submit, because they've effectively already submitted that to the city previously.
Councilmember Boehner.
I'm just wondering if it's conceivable that once we start the 23-year clock, if a developer could wait till perhaps year 20, and then do the development, and then end up only giving us revenue of maybe 18 months?
David, correct me if I'm wrong on this, but one of the conditions I believe we could put on them is to effectively make this within the policy an extension of the 10 years by saying if there is no development that is generating revenue, or no development of any kind within five years of approval of this cooperative agreement, it expires.
Right, that's exactly an issue that we've already been giving some thought to, and so one of the issues that will be presented to you if this eventually moves forward is, how long will the developer have to actually produce development before the city essentially turns off that project? And that will be a consideration, how many years, under what conditions, how, how much time does the developer have to phase in, how much do they have to produce by a stated deadline? Those are all very good issues that we need to address if this moves forward.
Actually, it's Councilmember Kellogg, and then, and then Hubach.
Thank you. The question that came back to my mind, sort of, from the original TIF to today's language and legislation and requirements of the TIF, if this was to expire, would there be substantial differences or litmus tests that the developer would have to show, other than what was approved back in '05? Has the game changed that much between then and now, if that was to expire?
I don't think so. The, the same requirements remain in the TIF Act that were in place in 2005 with no real substantive changes. They would have to do the blight study, they would have to do the revenue study, all of that.
Yeah, I agree. The, the factors that you, the items that the developer needs to submit, and the factors that you are required to consider by statute have not changed. So as a policy matter, you may weigh different factors differently, based on how the project has developed over time, the surrounding development, what's already happened with the TIF. You may give, you may render a different decision on those different points, but as a, as a legal matter, or as a statutory matter, the things that they need to submit and the items that you would need to consider to approve a new TIF plan are the same as they were back in 2005.
Councilmember Hubach.
I want to make sure that I'm understanding this. We pass an ordinance, then we send it to the TIF Commission, they have a public hearing on it, right? And then it comes, they can tweak it, and then it comes back to us. So I'd like to hear something from the TIF committee members that are here, if they've got anything that would help guide us in making our decisions. We'll make the final decision, that's true, but they will, they are on the TIF committee, and they know what it, all of the parameters there, and I'd like to hear from them as to how they feel about doing something this unusual.
We, we can certainly hear from the TIF Commission, but I'll remind the council that this is a policy decision.
I know, but also we make our decisions based on common sense, and that comes from policy.
Councilmember Holman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. In reference to Councilman Kellogg's question, while the factors are still the same, that are to be considered, the, the environment has considerably changed in that area since 2005. I would think personally that the blight finding would be much more difficult to get now, given the fact that we have three box stores in that area, and that's pretty much the heart of our economic center in the city of, of Raymore. Back in 2005, that was farmland, I mean, there wasn't anything there. And now, it's a thriving district, I would think that that would be highly-valued retail land. Am I off-base on that?
I think it would be, it would be a higher test. We've seen, we've seen blight studies that approved blight under some amazing conditions in the state of Missouri. And, and maybe that's all I better say about that.
Councilmember Morehead.
I, I don't want to step on anybody else's additional questions, but I guess, Mr. Mayor, I would go ahead and move that we go ahead and instruct staff to go ahead and proceed on creating policy language to effectuate the suggested recommendations in the staff report provided in our packet, and go ahead and take whatever necessary steps are to get the process moving that were also delineated in that report.
You don't need a motion this evening, do you?
I would like to have consensus from the council only to move forward with the policy.
We got a couple of fingers up. Before we move on with that, there's been a suggestion that we hear from the TIF Commission, if any commission member would like to jump in. And I'm, I'm looking at the school over here, thinking that-
Just a clarifying question, the TIF Commission won't be reviewing the policy per se, we'd be looking at the project itself.
That's correct, and actually, the TIF Commission, as most of you are aware, you actually get first crack at this. You don't see an ordinance that's coming before the council. You, you're all experienced, I'm, see, I'm talking to the choir.
Okay, go ahead, go ahead.
Not used to these. Basically, our job is just to review, you know, what the council brings to us. I mean, we don't make the policies, we don't change anything, you know, we can make recommendations, but, you know, I've been on the TIF Commission since day one, and, you know, set through, you know, several of these, the initial one, and it's basically what City Council decides, you know, what, what they want to bring to us, so.
Yeah, I, I completely agree. The council is the body that sets the policy. The TIF Commission then reviews to make sure that everything is meeting the policy. Donna?
I guess in all the testimony I heard tonight, you know, looking at the market, I'm not sure what's going on out there, but I would say that it would take more time and more cost for the developer to come back to the city. Let's say in a year, 12 months, they have a tenant, and we don't approve, or the council makes a decision not to extend it. Then they have to go through all of that, those procedures again, the cost involved with that, to bring that new tenant to the city. When we have other competition within North Cass County, where it's easier to locate another facility, another tenant, another big box, and I think if we extend that time, it makes it easier for those folks to bring a tenant in here and get bricks and mortar there on that site, producing revenue. So it's a little bit easier than if we let it expire, and it takes that additional time of, what, three to six months, for the whole process to move through again and make something happen. So I think we need to be looking at the fact that, as the city, we need to be agile, and thinking about our developer, that bringing another tenant into the city that can produce sales tax revenue, real estate taxes, and help us with that TIF project. sales tax revenue, real estate taxes, and help us with that TIF project that we have there that is there on the site right now. So that's kind of how I see it where, you know, you look at one fifty with the NNSA up there, you have, I think it's Zimmer, who's putting Flex Space in there on one fifty right now, down there on Richards Caber, and you have Menards going in. There's a lot of activity going on in this region. So I think if we shut it down, then we're creating some hindrance for the developer to bring a tenant in and do a project there on that parcel when there's so much other competition within this region, this area. So that's kind of how I see it.
I guess the only comment I would have as a new person for the TIF Commission, I think that the conditions that would be imagined on bringing this forward, would that be part of what the TIF Commission sees as it comes through the process? And if so, the details of those might be relevant, and it's hard to really have a strong opinion without seeing some of those details.
I think those conditions would become part of the discussion early in the process. So to be clear on the two things that are happening to make sure everybody understands, there's the policy amendment that will, these two things are related, but they proceed on their own paths essentially. There's the amendment to the policy, which will be considered in October, as Jim mentioned, and we will be noticing up the TIF Commission hearing, the developer will submit their proposed project for, that will go to the TIF Commission. And then after the TIF Commission's recommendation, that will go to the city council. The conditions that we've been discussing and the, as issues, I think those will find their way into the policy, but then they will be implemented for this project and we will start discussing those conditions, those other issues with the developer right away. So when this comes to the TIF Commission, we will already have some of those issues on the table for you to consider.
Councilmember Abdalguan and then Kellogg.
I was just going to say that I think changing this policy or putting in place this new part of our economic development policy is just going to give us options. It's not necessarily saying anytime we have a TIF, we're going to approve it if it's speculative. It's just saying these are some more options that we will have when we consider TIFs in the future.
I would agree with what Mr. Abdalguat just said there. If we were in a regular meeting, I would say that I would have given Mr. Morehead a second, but if we're not in that meeting, I agree with his recommendation to go ahead and go forward with this with that option.
Councilmember Boehner and then Holman.
I think after having listened to all of this, it's probably fairly prudent for us to go ahead and hold out the welcome mat a little bit longer.
Councilmember Holman.
Simply since staff's request was for consensus, I'm throwing my hat in the ring as well. I agree with the position everybody stated.
I've only heard one speak out against it. Councilmember Hubach, are you still against?
I'm against it in principle, but I'm willing for it to go forward and like the one said, let's hear what they have to offer, let's hear what the people have to say, and then after we hear from the TIF Commission, we will make our decision.
Very good. Well, there's consensus there. And thank you to the members of the TIF Commission. The game started about ten minutes ago, maybe? And councilmember Abdalguat, the cold air is coming down now, so you're...
Yes, Chiefs just scored. Not that I was paying attention.
We got people leaving the room. I think everybody just decided for me that we're going to recess for about five minutes. All right, we'll go ahead and continue with the, this evening's work session. I'm going to ask for a out-of-sequence here on the work session items. I'd like to skip all the way down to number five, the budget discussion, because we do have a member in the audience here that we can get out of here a little earlier if we finish this item up. So I'll toss this over to you, Jim.
Thanks, sir. At the budget work session on August sixteenth, councilmember Kellogg proposed that funding for a once-per-month Oats bus be included at a cost of twenty-eight-hundred for the fiscal year two thousand and fifteen budget. Following that request, the mayor did ask a series of questions of staff, asked me if I would get in touch with Ms. Davis from Oats, who's here tonight, and ask her some questions, mainly to find out if anything had changed in the Oats parameters, in the Oats bus parameters, since the last time the presentation had been made in a work session to the council. You may remember Ms. Davis and some of her ridership were here to answer questions for us. We did answer those questions, those were included in the memo to council, and Ms. Davis volunteered to be here tonight in case you all had any other questions relative to the Oats bus. Staff really didn't have any sort of a presentation relative to the questions other than to get them answered for you all. And we also did want to inform you that since this item was included as a spreadsheet item within the two thousand and fifteen budget, that we received a call for grant submittals from Mark for the enhanced mobility grant, which several municipalities do use to fund an Oats bus in the metropolitan area or have in the past. And so if there is no council objection, it would be staff's intent to go ahead and put in for this grant to see if we can possibly get a Oats bus once a month using the grant. That concludes staff reports.
Councilmember Morehead and Kellogg.
Mr. Fearborn, just based on what you just said with this grant, are these grants, perpetual grants, is this an annual where you have to renew? So if you, if we applied and received a grant, we could potentially receive just one year's funding and then every year we have to kind of come back on the list?
That's correct, sir.
Councilmember Kellogg.
Wow, I hit myself in the face with that one. On the grant, first of all, I'll just say that I'm supportive of directing staff to investigate that and go forward with trying to get the grant. Is this a matching funds grant or would this, this grant money be enough to fund the extra bus for total funds for the year?
There are several different ways that you can submit. Most of these types of grants are probably going to be on an eighty-twenty. Sir, do you know if that particular one's an eighty-twenty or a one-hundred percent? I think it's an eighty-twenty. So it wouldn't completely eliminate the twenty-eight-hundred, but it would certainly cut it down by a sizable amount.
The grant would be eighty percent of the cost and then our share would be twenty?
That's correct.
Okay.
Councilmember Abdalguan.
Just a quick question on that note. Is it something we could ask for funds to pay for more than one year? Could we do it, ask for funds to pay for five years, assign a five-year contract, let's say with Oats?
I think within the parameters of the grant, you can. I think you're allowed to extend that out as far as we're asking for this. You run the risk of, the longer timeframe, the more you're asking for, the more you run the risk of it being turned down.
Councilmember Kellogg and Morehead.
When I was reading through this, I believe I saw where Mark says that there's seven-point-two million dollars for the area. Is that annual funding for that or is that what they have for that until it's gone?
For the grant period, that's correct, sir, not annual.
And do we, do we have any idea how many different municipalities or organizations may be tapping into that to kind of give us an idea as to maybe how long that grant money might be there?
Hi. Is it on?
It is now.
Okay. I went to the pre-application workshop and there were about forty-six applicants there. It's not a lot of money and a lot of people. I didn't realize actually that you were going to apply for this grant, so I'd like to talk to you about that, too.
Sure.
Because we were going to apply for some also through Oats, so we might want to talk about that and work together on it.
That'd be great.
But there was, there were forty-six people there. Now, will they all apply? You know, there's a lot of rules to this and the matching and all of that, so...
And it covers a significant amount of items, including capital equipment expenses that can be expensed. You see a lot of places apply, like Foxwoods Springs may apply, this is just as an example for their bus, they may want a new bus. So you see some high-dollar items in there.
In seeing the staff report, I'm kind of understanding the process of the Oats bus a little better. What's the maximum seating capacity on a bus?
We have many different buses, but the bus that we've been using in the Raymore-Belton area holds twelve ambulatory and two wheelchairs.
Okay. And who decides who gets to be the eleven, the eleven to twelve in this?
Right now, we have a contact, a contact person in Belton that does all the calling and gets the bus filled for us.
And are they one of the eleven to twelve?
Sometimes they do a rotation if there's too many. Right now, she's got a list of about twenty and they do a rotation. So somebody sits out, several sit out every time.
Okay.
We do have bigger buses, but they cost more.
And you may notice further down in that write-up, Sarah had indicated that if we're writing the contract, the flexibility would be there for us to determine who's doing the scheduling.
Can that also include we get to determine where it goes? I mean, because I'm seeing no, no medical, anything, literally the phrase shopping and lunch-out schedule is what I'm seeing. So eleven to twelve people, and I'm assuming it's fairly equal split between Raymore and Belton.
Yes.
So about five people in our city get to go to have lunch and a bus sits there and waits for them while they have lunch. And that's what we're being asked to pay for.
Well, one of the, one of the, one of the difficulties with the Oats bus is when you start to get into medical scheduling, it becomes, the efficiency level drops pretty dramatically because, and people may not even want to take advantage of it for that because what they're having to do is schedule out both a bus and their doctor to get them to coordinate, and it's difficult to drop somebody off on kind of a will-call basis and then get back to them. So the most efficient service being provided is...
Entertainment.
And shopping.
Okay.
If you think shopping and lunch-out is not necessity, try staying home by yourself without any transportation for more than a month. I think shopping definitely for these people is necessity. They're buying their groceries. And I know you weren't on the council when this came up before, but then some of the people were getting to go shopping one time a month. If you got to get out and go shopping one time a month to buy everything you need for the whole month, think about what you would have to eat. You would have a week worth of fresh fruit and vegetables, you would have about two weeks with milk, your bread would get bad in one to two weeks. So you have two weeks of eating absolutely one-hundred percent things out of cans and boxes that you can make without milk, which is limited. And for these people that don't, this is their only chance, some of them, to get out of their house. Lunch-out, thirty minutes, forty-five minutes for someone to wait for them to have lunch is, in my opinion, definitely part of necessity for a good life. And I think that to discount that is not fair. So I think this is really important. I did when it came out before. I still think it's really important. I'm glad that there are buses so that if Raymore chooses to pay for one or not, they're not having just one timeout. What was happening before when this came up was there were two buses, one paid for by Mark and one paid for by Belton. And there were so many people who wanted to ride the bus that they couldn't take everybody every time. So literally, people were getting out one time a month. Some people are lucky enough to have church groups to take them, some people are lucky enough to have family members to take them or to bring them groceries, but some people aren't. This is their only way out of the house to get necessities. So now that we have three buses, there are some that are getting out twice a month, there still may be some that are only getting out once a month. So if Raymore provided that fourth bus, it would allow for all twenty people on the rotation to get to shop at least twice a month.
Councilmember Morehead.
I appreciate the information, but I'll carry it actually a little farther because it's an issue that I've been dealing with here just in Ward Two, because if we recall, we had an issue, a discussion about, and a presentation on Meals on Wheels a little over a year ago. I've got an elderly couple that's on the south side of our ward who cannot get out and get food, and they're in need of, they're in need of some assistance. You know, we've talked about funding a lot of ways to get people food. Food is a necessity, yes. Going to the grocery store is where you go get the necessities. Going to Golden Corral, per se, is not a necessity. But, I mean, I guess we can wash over some of the facts and just look at part of it, but we have people out there with, with needs that this money could go to that are far more in need and less able to provide for themselves. I'm supportive of helping people, but just throwing up the issue of, boy, people need to go get food is not justification to look over some of the other variables.
Just one more thing to add. It's more than food, and I, I work a lot with families in poverty, people who don't have necessities that they need, and shopping for socks, shopping for soap, shopping for cleaning supplies and toothpaste and toothbrushes, it's more than just food. So this shopping trip, you know, while you're right, there are people... And shopping for socks, shopping for soap, shopping for cleaning supplies and toothpaste and toothbrushes, it's, it's more than just food. So this shopping trip, you know, while you're right, there are people who can't get out and go to the grocery store and need meals brought to them, being able to go to Walmart, being able to go to Price Chopper, being able to go to the Dollar Store, those are all places where they can shop and get the necessities that they need. And I know at one point, the bus was not just sitting there waiting while they ate lunch because the bus was actually picking up some people, dropping them at the store, going and picking up other people, taking them to the store, taking the first round to lunch, picking up the second round to lunch. Take, I mean, it was, it was like a circus act so that more people could be served by this bus. So just a, a little more information to add to your decision-making.
Councilmember Duba.
I talked to a driver for Oats who lives in Morningview. And one of the things that he, he mentioned is they do go to the house to pick up the individual because obviously they're not able to drive on their own, so they have to be picked up. And that this is shopping only. It is not for medical or anything else. If it is medical, then they have, they schedule it differently and they have to pay a fee for the medical trip on that. And so he said he was going to send something to the council members explaining a little bit about what they had, what they had done. He said he had not had any, if I remember correctly, he, they had not had any that was in a wheelchair, but they couldn't necessarily take somebody that was in a wheelchair.
The Oats bus, and I'm trying to remember because we had this discussion some time ago, but there, there is a bus that comes up my, my street every afternoon to drop somebody off. There, there is a, a, some, some sort of way of getting a regular ride for, for things, right?
What you're probably seeing are our Casco area workshop buses.
It says Oats on it?
Yeah, well, that's right.
Oh, okay.
That's right. But they're taking people, they're picking up in Raymore and Belton to take down to Harrison Building.
Oh, okay, okay. All righty.
And that's a regular route. Those are, we have six buses that go there every day.
On the Meals on Wheels that have been at, we tried to do something along that line. I think Ivan Way did over at Foxwood. And the big stumbling block on that was you had to have people available to deliver. And we couldn't come up with enough people available to deliver or prepare the meals. And I think at one time, we even talked about the possibility of having Foxwood Springs prepare the meals and then going from there and picking them up. But I don't think anything ever happened with that, did it?
Well, is there any other comments this evening? The staff will go ahead and, and look at this application for, grant. Thank you. Thank, that's the word I was looking for, for a grant. And the item will continue to be on the spreadsheet for council deliberation and that's sort of it. Councilmember Duba. And that's, that, that is exactly the question that'll come before council at some other point, is whether or not the, the budget item becomes a, a contract. Councilmember Kellogg.
I think it's important that I point out that what the budget amendment, you know, line item is, is for one additional trip per month. That's what this is. This, this doesn't affect, you know, the other three that exist, you know? Thank Mr. Adams for his contribution in funding the one-day. Acknowledge Belton for doing what they do and then Mark doing what they do. You know, this is just us adding an extra one for that day. You know, there's, there's three others that we don't have any control of that could go away. Don't, we don't know, you know? I just feel that, you know, there is a need in the community and this is something that I think it's very affordable to do for something that is just so, so much needed, you know? I, I don't know. I, I, I support it, but it's just the one day. It is still on the budget.
We're, you know, we're not arguing the merits of a contract that's before us. Councilmember Delgoon.
Just one other quick thing that we did talk about last time that hadn't been brought up today is that when, when if we make a contract with Oats, we can decide where they go. We can say that the bus we pay for only goes to businesses in Raymore. So not only is it helping people in need in our community, but it's also helping our economic, our economy in Raymore and our business owners here too.
Thank you for coming out.
Thank you very much.
And we'll go back on the agenda to item number two, the City Arts Commission.
Thank you, sir. In April of this year, the city council expressed a desire to establish a city arts commission to promote public art. You may recall that I, I believe the nexus of that particular discussion was when we were having the discussion relative to the roundabout art and that extended into the need to have a commission to look at more public art. During the discussion, the council did seem to indicate that it would be their preliminary desire that the commission makeup would be seven members, one from each ward and three at large that would be chosen by the mayor with the advice and consent of the council. Staff was asked to research the issue and provides information within your packet on several different items, including what other communities are doing, how they've established it by code, sample of the city of Blue Springs, public art commission is in there and their duties and their charge that they've received and materials as well from an ordinance from the city of Columbia establishing their, their arts commission. Staff in researching this really came up with three kind of umbrella overriding questions slash direction that we'd like to receive from the council. The first one is, is the council envisioning a public art commission or a performing arts commission or a combination of both? And what would you think that looks like? Again, the nexus of this was simply public art, but there are a lot of the commissions out there that also address the performing arts. A second question that, that actually is before the council, one of the council members indicated, okay, well, it's being formed by code as a commission of the city, but could it also be a 501(c)(3) or another nonprofit organization? And Mr. Willert is here this evening to kind of address that question. Third question for the council's consideration is what, what do you see the city's role in this besides having the commission? Do you see a funding role? Do you see the commission totally funding itself up? That, that question remains and of course, this is, it's very timely at this point as we go into the fiscal year 2015 budget. Would you see some sort of a funding mechanism for that group? In addition, Mr. Catterett has done some research relative to having, within the community development department, some sort of a, a change to the development code that would require a developer to pay some sort of a fee in lieu to help support such a commission when development occurred. And Mr. Catterett's prepared to outline his memo to the council relative to that. That's kind of staff's overview. If you would like, we can go ahead and have Mr. Willert and Mr. Catterett make their presentations and then entertain any questions.
I think that would probably be a good way to do it.
We get Mr. Willert.
Thank you, Mr. Fearborn. You certainly can legally create a fine arts commission. The form or the role will be what makes the important or flushes it out. If we're going to have it city-controlled, city-funded, then in my opinion, it's, that particular entity will not be a 501(c)(3). But if its purpose is mainly to encourage arts or have public art, or what you're talking about, you can do that without making it a 501(c)(3). If the primary goal is to raise funds or obtain grants for the good of the arts, then my suggestion would be you can create your commission and they can spin off another 501(c)(3) entity as they have done in Liberty, as they have done in Blue Springs actually has done that also. I'm familiar with the attorney and some of the people serving in the Blue Springs. We've talked with them and that's what they came to rather quickly. So I don't want to, though my opinion, because it was a narrow shot, sounds negative that no, you're not going to be a 501(c)(3). A, a contribution to the city commission can be interpreted as deductible and charitable. What you find when you get out though and you want to get big money and big players to contribute to you, when it's to a city, there's a question. And it says that that could be deductible, but that also could have been your fine or your development cost or your something. And so you can get audited. When it's from a 501(c)(3) who issues the letter that say, "We love and acknowledge your gift of blah, blah, blah to this entity," then it's much cleaner and the big contributors. I'm advised I'm not one, but I've met a few in my time. And so they like getting a 501(c)(3) letter better. But I don't want it to restrict that. When you flesh out for Mr. Fearborn or whoever's carrying forward this, the extent of what kind of commission you went, if you want it just for public or performing arts in a narrow role, I'd be very comfortable with that being the totally city-created commission. But if your chief purpose was to raise money for Raymore Arts, I think we're going to need a two-step process.
When council adopted a goal to promote and support public art earlier this year when we did our council, you did your council goal-setting session, one of the action steps that was identified to accomplish that goal was to look into a policy that would require public or private developments, projects to earmark a certain percentage of that project for public art. It's often referred to as a percent-for-art program where some communities have this program just for public projects. So if we had a project where we are doing a public building, a percent of the total budget for that project would go towards public art. Some communities have carried it over to the private sector. So with a private development, over a certain minimum amount for a project, that they, that private development would, would provide a percentage of their project for public art. Typically, the percentages range from a quarter of, of one percent, some go as high as three percent. The, the typical program that I see is a one percent of the project. The, what is, what is for a private development, the codes usually provide the option for the developer to provide the art as part of their project where they would, where they would provide the art itself, or they could do a fee in lieu. If we provide the option for the developer to provide their own art, the arts commission becomes an important part of that whole process. So the, they are involved in actually reviewing and approving the private art that, that, that developer wants to provide. So we have the, the ability for the commission to, to make sure that, that, that art complies with the policy and guidelines that we have in place, that it's available for the public to view and any other policy decisions that need to be made as part of that program. The, the actual requirement is usually get triggered as part of, part of the development. What's classified as public art, a lot of different things, of course, that would be determined in the ordinance itself, but certainly paintings, sculptures, carvings, murals, fountains, other site-specific amenities can be classified as public art. The, the few within the area here that have the public arts programs, Columbia, Missouri has one of the longer-standing programs started back in 1997, but theirs is focused just on public projects and they have the one percent, one percent threshold. Kansas City's had one for, for many, many years. Again, it's a one percent program, but it's also for public projects. Leewood has the combination of public and private projects. They actually do require, theirs is based upon a per-square-foot fee. They don't necessarily use a percentage of the overall project, but it is a requirement for private development to provide funding for public arts. There are many other examples, you know, that to go over that we, that we could provide more information on. Certainly, a lot of ordinances, we could glean the requirements that they will have, the guidelines they would have for, for the entire program. It's certainly something that we could look into, it's something that you asked staff to look into as part of the goal-setting session and certainly at this point are looking for direction. If you want staff to proceed with a code amendment, it would be an amendment to our unified development code, so it would go through the process of going to the planning commission for their consideration first.
That concludes staff reports, sir.
All right, thank you. Questions from the council? Comments from the council? Uterances for the council? Councilmember Duba?
My, my first thought was what do you do with our old art when you don't want it anymore, when it's obsolete or you wanted to have a, a change in, in focus or something like that? And second thing was, I remember a number of years ago, I was on the council, first one on the council, there was some sort of a state statute that was passed that said that a business, and it seemed to me like it was banks, that when a bank made money off of that community, they had to return a certain percentage of it back to the community in the form of public art or something, then along that line. I don't know, is that still, do you all know, is that still true or not? But I, I remember that because I remember thinking at the time, oh, boy, we could take advantage of that, we could do this, that and the other thing, but nothing ever happened. So I don't know whether they, it came from Missouri Legislature, I'm pretty sure, but you, but you're not familiar with anything like that?
I'm unaware. Mr. Willert is shaking his head indicating he's just as unaware as I am. So we'll research that and see if something's out there in that regard.
It seemed to me like the community bank of Raymore had to do something. I don't know when, when they started those buses or for schools or what they did, but they, they had to do something to return. And it was a state and it was all big businesses that made their money off of the people in the community. They had to return a certain amount of it to the community.
Strikes me as a bit odd because all businesses make money off their customers.
The what?
I said, that strikes me as odd because all businesses make money off of their customers.
Well, whatever this, I know, but this, this was something had to do with, I think, more like banks and, and everything on there. That's what I remember and I don't know whatever happened, but I do remember that there was discussion among people in the community about what that meant. And so then I had some other questions, but I'll wait for somebody else.
Did you have your hand up? Okay.
Thank you, sir. I apologize, Mr. Fearborn. I kind of slipped back and regressed to my seventh-grade days and I woke up somewhere in your third question for the council. If you could repeat your three questions again for me that you'd like for us to, oh, look at this, she's paying attention. She's the A-plus. Disregard.
Well, the first question was public art and performance art. Okay. Councilmember Boehner, then.
All right. There we go. So to answer the first question, I've always thought of it as, as a hybrid, as both, both the public art and the performance art. When I think about what we, what we sat through that goal-setting session and some of the comments that came out about it, as a city council, we, we develop policy, but it would be really nice to have an engine that was driving and helping to drive for some of those goals, some of those quality-of-life issues that we talked about in that goal-planning session. In terms of what do we do with art when it's, when it's old and it might have outlived it? I've been, over the last several years, I've watched several projects in Leewood, several art projects in Leewood and what they do with them when they have, maybe their location has, has, they're not being viewed as much. And I've watched them pick up, pick those pieces up and their sculptures, most of them, and they, they move them to different spots in the city where they're, they're viewed more often and people have an opportunity to interact with them more. So I don't think art really goes out of style. I think people, art is such a, has such the, an ability, ability to allow people to read into it what they will that what changes with art over time is the cultural influences that inform people about what they're seeing, what they get back from that piece of art. So that's kind of how I feel about that. In terms of the funding mechanism, I'm most familiar with the, the one percent rule, just in terms of the projects I've done myself with a number of buildings throughout Kansas City area, that's been very common and it seems to have worked out well.
Councilmember Morehead.
Well, actually, Councilmember Boehner actually made me think of something. So if they move it around, where'd, where'd the cows go? Remember all the cows from years ago?
They sold those.
Yeah, they sold them, that's what it was. Yeah, they sold them, that's what it was. You know, when we first started talking about this, I remember back in our retreat as well, and, and I think one of the things that, for me, I was kind of, I kind of envisioned in my own mind was, you know, we have a bedroom community here, we have businesses here, we have sports here. What we're kind of lacking is a little bit of the performing and visual arts, but yet we have been doing some of these things. I mean, we're talking about this roundabout sculpture, and we're talking, and things there, that's art. I mean, that's public art. And, and, you know, with the, with the farmer's market, you know, they're, they've had bands performing there and things like that. All of these things, to me, kind of incorporate that, and that's the one thing that I, I, at least myself envisioned the city wanting to work toward. Problem is, is I'm still forced for the trees, and so as far as, you know, 501(c)(3)'s or whatever, whichever the section would apply, and whether we do this just solely funded by the city, to me, I, I almost think we need to have the commission get together and organize and decide what vision they would also have themselves. I'm not sure, I, I would be able to answer that question so much as, I'd like to, I just want to, I guess, push the machine forward. I'd like to see, you know, he mentions, we need an engine. Well, you know, right now, the car's sitting, not even running, so I'd be encouraged to see some of that. But that's, I, I, I just think, big picture, I'd like to see Raymore embrace both visual and performing arts a little more to make us a more well-rounded community.
Councilmember Hubok, then Kellogg, and then Holman.
To me, this commission on, on art should also go in with beautification, and the reason for that, you take the entrance to the park, that is parkland, but it was, what you see there in the roundabout is the results of two private organizations, the Park Foundation, this 501(c)(3), and the Sunset Garden Club, which is also a 501(c)(3). They purchased the sculptures and gave them to the city, and they also purchased the plants and everything. How do you determine what is beautification and what is art on that? In this case, they had that, they beautified the area, but they did it through art. In the same way that you're talking about the roundabout here, you've, the new one that Lucy Webb and Dean, you're going to have some flowers, something to beautify it, but you're also going to have sculpture of some kind. So to me, we should be talking about beautification rather than just, because to me, the art is too limiting. It's either performing art or visual art. Beautification can be art of all kinds, it can be other things, and it, it is more expandable, and I think it would suit our needs better to have it as a beautification committee rather than as just quote, visual arts, performing arts, or whatever you want to call it. That's one of the, and then what are we hoping to accomplish by this? Is it to attract tourism for, you know, you have relatives in Grand Pass, Oregon, and so do I, my daughter's there. And one of the things they have, they have a certain period of time that they do it, they have bears, that they're almost life-size, that they put out on each street corner. One will look like Caesar, one will look like a Viking, one will be on forefoot, one will be standing and all. And a local bank, the Echo Bank, is the one that does all that, and they store them and then in a warehouse, and then what happens, people coming through town, because that's the Rogue River, and what it is, is where the salmon go to spawn, and so they have a lot of tourism. And so they will let people go in to where they have them stored, and they will do a tour, and they can see those bears and the distance, and they have about like, what, 20 of them or something? I don't know whether you've ever seen them, but, but I have, and it, it's really interesting. And it is done by the local bank in answer to returning back to the community something of what they have done.
So again, it's banks supporting the arts?
The what?
Banks supporting the arts again.
Yes, they have the banks supporting the arts on that. And then it, it's like I said, is it, are we trying to attract tourism with this? Are we just trying to beautify certain areas of town, public buildings, subdivisions? Or what are we trying to?
Right now, we're talking about public art, I mean, the city arts commission, and if I remember right, what the council discussed before is that we wanted to support the arts. There is another item here that's going to come up right after this, and it's the city beautification commission, so. If I, my notes are correct, it's Kellogg, Holman, Boehner, and then Morehead.
I concur.
Are you taking notes now? Oh, okay.
She's doing a great job. I'm going to refer to him here.
To answer Steph's question, I, I find myself agreeing with, with Mr. Boehner and Mr. Morehead, that, you know, having that engine and allowing them to not push, but pull this through, you know, and not tying their hands, allowing them, allowing that commission the, the flexibility, the freedom, or the latitude to do both of what we're talking about. We're, we're talking about performing arts and structural art, okay? Now, whether that ends up being a certain percentage for structural, a certain percentage for, for performing arts, I don't know. I, I definitely don't want to tie anybody's hands, but when I, when, when I've discussed this in the subcommittee for the roundabout feature, that was always my, my intent of my, my dialogue was, you know, arts is more than just a sculpture down in the roundabout. So, you know, to answer their question, yes, you know, both would be on the, on the agenda, the table there for support there. I had something else, but I'll let it go.
Councilmember Holman?
Thank you, sir. Without extending the debate too much, just to give you my opinion, I think it seems to me like there's fairly good consensus that this is a pretty good idea, and I would agree with that. I think it is. I think it's something we should have. As far as the public or performing arts, I agree with Councilman Boehner, I kind of envisioned a hybrid, I think that's our best route. I would agree with Councilman Morehead's position that the city probably begins it, and then maybe they, when they get together, look at doing what Joe talked about and spinning off into the 501? Is it 501? 501? Too many numbers and letters, you know what I'm talking about.
Yes, it is, Ms. Hubok. The, you can let this commission, you can create it and let them handle a number of these issues here, could let them come back to you with that, it would seem, hearing what's going on here.
And then in the, to the third question, we're still, of course, in the early just discussion stages of this, but I would not be opposed to maybe some small startup funds from the city for, you know, the initial push and, and possibly looking at a percentage fee from developers, so. And, and just so you know, I'm kind of doing this on my own with the, the Michael Jackson Thriller video that we're going to do, we're going to do a little bit of the performing arts. I've got a date in mind for a special session for the city council. I'll let you know, the kids have been practicing, and that is going to be a lot of fun, so. Still going to do that.
Councilmember Boehner?
So I thought what was kind of interesting about what I've been hearing, especially when we talk about the beautification, is we were, we're going to talk about beautification here in just a little bit, that, that commission, but, you know, with these commissions, we get this synergistic atmosphere between the, the commissions, and it's possible that as we, as we allow them to work and to coordinate with each other across the boundaries, we'll build community, which is what we, that's, that's our overriding goal, right? We want to build a strong community. And so I find that, that discussion about the beautification committee and what do they do and how does that work with, with them, I think that, that by providing for an arts commission, that opens, that opens up a huge door for people to work together, to come together as a community.
Councilmember Morehead, and then Kellogg?
I'm, I'm almost feeling out of place here, because actually, I was going to come back around and say, Councilmember Hubok, you mentioned the bears that are brought out by the bank, so to give a wonderful Raymore flavor, can we have a broad, comprehensive display of all the hats that you've worn on the council as a display for the city, since that's kind of a landmark for us? And actually, Councilmember Holman, are you telling me we're going to have a special session so you can moonwalk? What's this about Michael Jackson? I just can't continue, I'm sorry.
Council Kellogg?
He just ruined me, and I will say this, we did have a subcommittee meeting, and one thing that we, I kind of jokingly said about, you know, talking about a finial on top of a structure, I said, you know, we could have a replica of one of Mrs. Hubok's red hats up there. But anyway, and, and I'm saying that respectfully and lovingly of your hats, I really am. I, I think one thing that would take, I, I would like to see a lot of thought put behind is the makeup of any commission that, that comes up, you know? And I, I think there's some great ideas as far as one from each ward and then three from, three at large. In the report that, that was sent out to us, the different makeups of, of the different cities and that, and there's a lot of, a lot of good ideas out there, you know, even from the professional community, you know, where one city says at least two from the art community, okay? If we look at, at how that commission is made up and having the latitude of, of other people, getting that, that cross-generational and cross-experience and diversity into there, it would just make it that much more enriched. So, you know, I, I think the makeup of it would be very, very important.
Councilmember Hubok?
Yes, well, I wonder, when you're talking about performing and the visual arts, in my hats, you're talking about buildings and space, and it takes a lot of that, so what are you planning to do? I know, I have one room that's dedicated to my hat, to my hats, but now what would you do on the performing arts? Do you plan to use, I mean, would we plan to use the elementary or the high school buildings? The, how would we do it? Because when you're talking about that, you're talking about a separate building, aren't you?
Well, and I see three hands up, I'll, I'm going to take a stab at it real quick. Performance art can be done in the park. Yeah. So I, I think the order was, that I saw the hands go up was Kellogg, Boehner, and Morehead, so we'll go that way.
And, you know, that's exactly what I was going to say, is that, you know, performing arts doesn't have to have a performing arts building like, you know, in Kansas City has at the Kaufman Center. It, it could be just, you know, at, at the farmer's market, if and when we ever have a gazebo, in a, a lot that some business has to just, you know, have a flash mob, you know, something like that. You know, that's, that's exactly what Mr. Holman's talking about with, with his video. Anything that, that will support the, the performing arts, you know? We're talking about Hawk Ridge Park, maybe having a, a small amphitheater there, you know? Performing arts doesn't just have to happen inside of an auditorium. But I, I am in favor of supporting the performing arts wherever we can, when we can, you know? So whether it's in a vacant lot, in a school, in a church, in, in, in city hall chambers, you know, that, that's fine. What's that?
Councilmember Boehner?
I'm not saying that.
So when I think about the how question, I think that's probably premature for us, because, you know, that, that kind of gets into the weeds. The how is determined by the commission. We, we provide them a mandate, we provide them a starting point, go to it. This is what, this is what we want, have at it.
Councilmember Morehead, and then I'm going to take a privilege.
Fair enough, fair enough. I, I was just going to try to wrap up and say, Councilmember Hubok, your question is a fantastic question, but that's all the more reason why we formed this commission, because that's one of the things their task to do, is to justify themselves and justify what their vision is. So I was going to actually, at this point, ask to, that staff move forward on the creation of this commission.
And, and that's more or less where I was going to go. What I've heard here this evening is the answer to the first question, public art or performance art, yes, is the answer. So both. Funding, there's all sorts of different paths for funding, and I've heard the council not discuss the funding part of it. I, I will remind everybody that the, the funding of something like this will be a policy decision. The arts commission, as, as I would see it, we would want the council to meet with them and discuss funding if it got to that point. The makeup of the arts commission, it sounded to me like everybody was, was kind of nodding in agreement with what the staff has proposed. Is there any other questions that needed to be answered?
No, but if I could perhaps clarify how staff would proceed. Mr. Willarth indicates that the commission itself, as you can see from some of the materials, the commissions are contemplated within code. Perhaps we could put out a call for volunteers for this specific commission. The council could choose the commission, and the first order of business would be to meet with the commission, so the commission could establish their own mission and hear from the council the parameters concerning performing arts, public art, and then begin to write that section of code as far as what they saw their duties, ultimately to come before the council for final tweaking in it within an ordinance and then to be added to code. Would council approve of that method?
I'm seeing a bunch of affirmative nods.
We will proceed accordingly.
Are you including in that, Mr. Mayor, funding?
No, no funding.
So we're going to have a commission, but the city's not going to do any funding to save money to start it or anything?
There's nothing to fund yet. The, the commission will determine what, what the course is from there. The only other thing that I would add is, we got to make sure we do not have a statue in an arboretum of somebody taking a selfie, okay? None of that, not in Raymore. Did you have a?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, actually, I do recall that during our Saturday work session, I had made the recommendation to have a budget amendment to include money to fund this, and we went ahead and set that aside because we were going to have this discussion tonight. So actually, I'm remiss in the fact that that was supposed to be a part of the discussion, and I, I guess I would go ahead and move then to see if we could do a budget amendment to allow $10,000 to fund this.
Do we have a line item on the budget?
Actually, the, and if I didn't pick up on this, it's my bad. It occurred, what I remember is that you had indicated the $50,000 that was going to go to parks
Right.
might be delegated better elsewhere, but that was about as far as, would it be in your intention then that the $50,000 that was going to go to parks didn't be used for this purpose? Is that what your thinking was?
Well, I thought, I, I kind of pulled that back, it was floating the idea, I, I just, but since this topic was brought up and it is something that we need to talk about, I'd like to go ahead and suggest that we throw an, an amount out there as a, a line item amendment, and just, I'll even initiate $10,000.
So there would be, then in the spreadsheet that you all will be voting on, there would still be the $50,000 reduction that you had initially proposed in the $100,000 going to parks? Or would that be removed, and instead, there would be a $10,000 initial funding line item for costs associated with startup of the commission?
Since I can't remember all the exact conversation from that Saturday, I'll go ahead and go with your latter part of not meant, not changing the park amount allocated, but to just independently create the $10,000.
Very good, sir. We'll adjust the spreadsheet accordingly as well.
Councilmember Obdoak.
Just a quick question about that. I'm, I'm just sitting here wondering, is it realistic to expect this commission to create themselves? Are they going to need $10,000 to spend in their first year? Would it make more sense to, to do that in future years and maybe not this first year? It seems like they're going to be pretty overburdened with deciding what their role is, what their, you know, all the details, just what's going through my head?
No, and I think that's a really good question. The only problem is, is I just, my, my hope is that we don't know how big or expansive they could potentially get, so I just thought if we had something nominal in there in case they did have an expense that came up, they don't have to come before us for every time they need a dollar. I just thought, so I'm, I'm not completely open to the amount, I just think that since they might get in there, if they did suddenly want to look at something or there was a kind of a accidental expense that'd be covered, that was the only intention, so.
Mr. Fearborn?
Thank you, sir. Some potential expenses, I guess, just out of the start. If they are trying to determine their mission, there is the possibility that they would want to call in a representative from one of the other communities, and normally we pay a stipend. They may want to get a consultant to, to help them even form that code, to determine their mission. Those early stages, there can be some missed Those early stages, there can be some miscellaneous expenses associated. Would that be kind of?
Yeah, I, I mean, and again, I think our ultimate goal is if this council or if this commission really takes off and they're doing what we hope and they needed more money, they can always reapproach us with a budget amendment and if they don't really spend it, then it's just sitting there in the budget and kind of absorbs back to next year.
And any, any of these funds that would be spent, that come before the council before, for, it's, it's not like the commission gets the, gets a checkbook with a balance of $10,000 in it, so.
Correct.
Mr. Mayor, if they wanted to become a 501(c)(3), the normal rate on that is $500 to get it before the, and anything more than that, they may not want to be a 501(c)(3) depending on how closely they're going to be tied with the city because the city can't be a, a charitable organization. But if they wanted to do something like that, they could always come back to the, but if the idea about the consultant would let them go ahead and do some work, but if we were talking about 501(c)(3), they should come back to us.
Alrighty, I think that ramps that up. Enough information to move forward on now.
We do, so we will, we will begin advertising for the volunteers, we will amend the budget spreadsheet to reinsert the $50,000, but include a $10,000 expense line item for, uh, potential costs associated with this group.
Very good, very good. And we'll move on then to the city beautification commission, which could be a separate commission, but work hand in hand with the arts. So staff report on city beauti, you want mine?
Getting there, sir. Thank you, sir.
And we're not passing notes over there, right?
You're so kind. At that same budget work session on Saturday, August 16th, Councilmember Huback, uh, when we were considering, just like now, uh, discussion of the arts commission did bring up whether the council might entertain a city beautification commission. Staffordly doesn't have a report, thought Councilmember Huback may want to make a presentation. Um, we did include kind of the mission statement and the function of the independent city beautification commission so you could kind of see a framework for one of the local groups that does this. That concludes staff report, sir.
Councilmember Huback?
The only thing I really had to say about that, it seemed to me that, uh, an arts committee council and beautification were kind of redundant in that they, both of them covered the same ground and it wasn't necessary. And I thought that beautification had a wider concept than art, art council did. And so I just wanted to consider maybe having two, having a committee that had two sides to it. One, maybe statues and things and sculptures and things of that nature in there and the beautification, it should be landscaping, flowers, whatever that would go with. Two of them, to me, the two of them work together, pretty hard to, to separate them.
Yeah, I, you know.
Maybe the commission.
Yeah, I, I think the, the council should definitely discuss this because my, my view of it is the arts are different, the arts can be beautiful, but they can also be a separate entity to beautification. And, and I, other than our codes, you know, mowing the lawns and, you know, uh, noxious weeds and getting rid of, uh, bad trees and stuff like that, uh, keeping your, uh, we have property maintenance codes and I view all that as beautification. Now, uh, there, there are, there are houses in, in Raymore that whoever lives there has got an awfully good green thumb because they, they get flowers and all that sorts of stuff out there. I don't do that well, so. Council, councilmembers and Councilmember Kellogg?
When I think of beautification commission, I, the first thing that comes to my mind is original town, Raymore, with what the, the changes that we've done down there with, with the lights, the street signs, the, the sidewalks, all of that down there is what I think of beautification. Sprucing up the entries into the different neighborhoods like over at, uh, Remington when we moved the monument that was there and we, we put the new one in and did the reconfiguration of, of that intersection, you know, that, that was beautification of that, that general area. Just like, you know, going into some of our older neighborhoods where you have the signs that are falling down and, and being dilapidated and restructuring those, that's beautification. That's not so much public art, you know, that's, that's sprucing up the city and, and the places that you see when you first drive into the city or into the different neighborhoods and that. And given distinction to each, you know, each neighborhood is, is very distinct, you know? Sometimes all of our houses look the same, but really the makeup of the neighborhoods can be very different. So, you know, beautification is, to me, means sprucing up, not, not putting pizzazz there with, with a sculpture.
Councilmember Boehner and then Huback?
I, I see them both separate as well, um, but I do see them both being, uh, a great benefit to each other, like I've said before. Uh, the other thing that I'm a big fan of having both of them, um, is that, uh, I'm a big fan of delegation and, um, I delegate the beautification of my yard to my 15-year-old son. And, um, while, while we have goals, um, and, and we want to see this happen, we, we really can't do all that work and we really need to get that work off onto people who will do it, who care about it, who will push it through and, and, and realize the goals that we have for the city.
Councilmember Huback?
I guess I'm thinking in terms of the roundabout by the park, when you see it with all of the flowers there and with the, the sculpture, that was all done by one group. But if, if we had one in beautification, they would have the plans. If we had another one on sculpture, they would do that. They might have some conflicts there of interest and it just seemed to me like it might be a little bit easier if, if one group was working, maybe I'm wrong.
Councilmember Morehead?
Well, and, and Councilmember Huback, I kind of see, I see the same thing, but I almost see a slightly different side of that. I see them being synergistic. I, I mean, I see where they could, you're right, there are times I think they are going to come together on projects, but, you know, one of the things and, and Councilmember Boehner has hit this point very well tonight is we're trying to, we're thinking of ways, especially dealing with aesthetics, where we're reaching out to the community and trying to get a lot of people in the community involved. I mean, we already do have a tree board, we already have Parks Department, you know, Parks Commission, we already have a council and we already have a P&amp;Z and we already, we, but we are kind of asking to do more, we are spreading out a little bit, but it's with a different purpose and trying to get more people in the community involved to do different things and, and, you know, I, I, I mean, I see them, I see these as different, but I see them both serving a wonderful goal. It's helping present Raymore better or in a way that is more pleasing. So I, I think there, I think that can work together, not necessarily in conflict.
I'm not hearing any general consensus about forming a beautification commission. Is there anybody that's, oh, okay. This is something I think we can, we really, we need to remember it all the time. Uh, and I think when, when you were mentioning, you know, we have parks, we got, uh, we, P&amp;Z for that matter, I mean, that, you know, we, we do have codes enforcement, we have, uh, property maintenance codes and all this stuff does, you know, go in concert to, to make a more beautiful Raymore. But unless there is a consensus here for a beautification commission, okay, there is not, we'll move on to the next topic.
Thank you, sir.
This, this was brought up by Councilmember Westco.
That's correct, sir.
The last meeting or the meeting, I think it was the last meeting?
Yes, sir.
Okay, and, and we agreed to put it on this work session, so I'll let you take it.
Very good, sir.
Did you?
I, I was, I'm completely comfortable. Mr. Westco had asked me to speak on this issue, but I'll, I'll, if staff could give a report.
Yeah, let's, let's go with staff.
Very good, sir. Um, at, at the last regular council meeting, uh, at the end of the meeting after you all had voted on the, the second reading passage of Task Three for the Civic Center, Councilmember Westco did ask staff if it would be possible to bring forward a budget amendment to have the Task Three and potential Task Four associated with this, if the council so chooses to move on to Task Four, come out of the project fund in the restricted revenue fund for this project as opposed to the park fund, since it, it seemed to him, and I'm, I'm translating for him here, if he's spoken with Councilmember Morehead, he can probably go a little deeper into it, but the, the essence that I took from it was that, um, since the project has morphed more from being a recreation type center, uh, parks and rec type center to truly more of a civic center, that perhaps the project fund itself, uh, would be better used to fund this. In fact, normally the project fund is used to fund up the feasibility study or the initial architectural study that's done with this, we put it all into the same, they normally don't come out of two funds. Uh, staff could in fact, from, from the standpoint of auditing and accounting and all of that, a budget amendment can always be done to move this amount into the project fund out of the restricted revenue fund.
Does everybody understand? Everybody agree with that? That was quick.
We'll be bringing a budget amendment to you accordingly.
Now, the next, the next item, and I can't find it in my notes, it's the queue.
Would you like mine, sir?
Yeah.
Staff, staff made note that there, there were some council member comments, uh, which I guess speaks, speaks that yes, some things are coming out of the ward meetings that are, that are valuable, that a lot of the, a lot of the council member questions were relative to, uh, what's happening, uh, we haven't heard about this in a while, all great questions. Um, the, the other thing that we heard is a lot of times the, the council, and that we recognized before, there are times when things come to the council, the council weighs in on them and as a matter of fact, you all had one just last week at your council meeting relative to the Johnson Drive, uh, storm sewer projects. Uh, you know, you all weighed in on that, told staff what your opinion was, kind of directed staff, many months went by and the next thing you saw of that was it's appearing before you on a, on a council agenda. Uh, we want to, and, and all of the reports, for the most part, that the council gets are, this is what happened this last week, this is what happened this last month, this is what's happened this last quarter. Uh, staff is pleased to bring you and, and I got great input from, from all of the management team on this, uh, some by category rather than by department where areas of interest might be for you all, things that are coming up rather than things that have happened. And our intention would be to give you the queue, uh, in this format at each work session that you have and we'll update it accordingly. Some items will remain on, some items will drop off, um, obviously as we pass the deadlines, but we're pleased to bring it to you and we hope you enjoy it and get a lot of information from it.
And as I said earlier this evening, I like, this is great, this is fantastic. Uh, I, I've got one question though, under, under community outreach and upcoming ribbon cuttings, uh, Veterans Day celebration at City Hall, is that on the 11th or the 10th?
It's actually on Veterans Day.
The only reason I ask is I was asked to be there and it's on my calendar, it's Tuesday, not Monday.
Yeah.
And I committed to another Veterans Day event on Monday.
And, and we'll correct that one.
Alright.
This first one, we were having a little bit of trouble formatting, after it had all been put in, all of this, all of, at, Kyle Worthington got tasked with, okay, now you need to go back in and put everything in date order and he stared at me for like five minutes because these were all over the board. I'm sure something happened there.
I'll see if I can whip up a really cool Excel spreadsheet for him that will do it automatically. But, and, and I assume that everybody else, when you looked at this, you, you had the same expression that I did, which was yee-haw, this is cool, I really like this.
And, and as always, any questions on this, we're available anytime to answer them, you know, they, these are quick bullets for you all, which may lead to expanded questions and we fully understand that.
And, uh, as, as we all are to our citizens out there, the city staff is available to us every day, 24/7 via email. They may not answer at 2:00 in the morning, but sometimes you'll be surprised, so. We do have reason to go into executive session, so I'd entertain a motion, uh, to go into executive session, uh, for, I'm sorry?
Just kind of a personal question, if you don't mind.
Sure.
Um, heard me talk about my upcoming, what may be a forerunner project to our, uh, arts commission, the performance that I planned for my house on Halloween and preliminary talk with John Kennedy staff about the kids performing at the Harvest Night, we've still got to say, I got to get with, uh, John McLean and set up the details on that, but the kids have been learning the dance, they've, they've learned the dance now and we're, I'm starting to work through some of the technical stuff with the music cut and the lights and that kind of stuff. I have tentatively assigned a slot if staff wants it and you could come, obviously to my house on Halloween, you could go to the Harvest Night and view it, but I, I'm, I think I'm looking at setting up a special night on the weekend of the 17th, maybe the 17th or 18th could be Saturday, Sunday, with a special by invite only, which would include parents, friends and, and city council, if you're interested in that. It's going to be pretty cool, it's also going to be pretty short, it's going to last maybe four or five minutes. So I just want to see if you guys are interested in that, if not, we'll lop that off and you can catch it another time.
You're going to be out at the Harvest Night thing?
The plan is right now, I've got to kind of firm up details with Parks Department, but we're planning to go then, but like I said, we'll probably need a dress rehearsal at my house anyhow, so if you want, I could invite you over for that one and, yeah, we haven't, y'all keep giving me a hard time about the, there's a slight possibility that I may do a short solo in this, it's not a, not a done deal yet.
I'd almost pay money to see you moonwalk.
Our dance instructor Lauren has not, he's got creative license on this, so we're waiting to see, but you all good with catching somewhere else or what do you think? What's?
Well, if you're at the Harvest Night event, I'll, I'll, I'm going to try to attend that.
Yeah, let's not get crazy, I don't know if I want to do this in front of a whole bunch of people or not, but the kids are, they're, they're excited, it's, it's pretty cool, it's, it's come together and it's, it's kind of fun to watch.
Kevin?
I'm going to beg for forgiveness if I ran on your parade, but what, what I worry about is if, when three or more of us together requires public notice of meeting, uh, that, you know, so I, like I say, I, I just wanted to say.
No, we, we can always get together as long as we're not discussing city businesses, isn't that correct?
It's just an invite to view a performance is all.
Okay.
Otherwise, we couldn't, you know, do a holiday party or something like that.
I'll let, if it's okay, I'll just let Jim know if we're going to do one, I'll let you know and then he'll communicate it out if you all want to show up that night, because I think we're going to do a dress rehearsal that evening and for friends and family, if you guys want to show up, you can.
Thank you. We do have reason to go into executive session for real estate acquisition matters as authorized by Section 610 dot O212, I'd entertain a motion to go into executive session.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we go into executive session for real estate matters as authorized by 610 dot O212.
Second. I think we had one motion in about six seconds. We have a roll call vote, please.
Thank you, sir. Councilmember Boehner?
Yes.
Councilmember Kellogg?
Yes.
Councilmember Huback? Councilmember Adelgawad?
Yes.
Councilmember Holman?
Yes.
Councilmember Morehead?
Yes.
We're going to executive session, um, since this is a work session, we will not come back to adjourn.